All right, welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, May 8th. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible.
Okay, I guess I'm taking roll call since our secretary's not here. Hart, he's online. Art Favazza, I'm here. John Ritter.
Here.
Matt Foreman.
Here.
Harry Bildaback.
Here.
Jeff Moore.
Here.
Carl Carlin.
Here.
Jack Shelton.
Here.
Welcome, Jack, new face on the board. Jeff Hunt? All right, we have, oh, I'm sorry, Brian Nolan. There's Brian down there, Brian Nolan. Let me write you on here. We have a quorum. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the April 10th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Did everyone get a chance to review the minutes? Any issues with it? Motion to approve by proclamation? Okay, all right. Minutes are approved. Do we have any citizens who would, to stand up and address anything that is not on tonight's agenda? One online, doesn't look like it. Okay, moving on. Pardon me, let me get my log back in here. Okay, old business. This would be the comprehensive signed plan for 12, 1234 Hanley Industrial Court. And do we have a city report on that? Okay, the applicant, I'm sorry, the applicant goes first. If the applicant's here, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Do I have a microphone?
Does it work?
Okay, there is one, we got rid of the big one, okay.
Hi, how are you all? My name's Harry Freeman. I am the owner of 1234 Hanley Industrial Court. And I am here this evening in front of you to request a comprehensive sign plan for the building. I don't know if it shows up from the... Anyway, so what it is, is a comprehensive site plan, if you look through the handout and if you look at the building, there's a, originally, we purchased the building about three years ago. And there was notch out areas for, down below, right above the glass, for signage. And over the period of years, it's really kind of just kind of falling apart, to be honest with you. It's rusted metal and all that above it. So when we purchased it, there were already signs put up by the work ethic that was originally there. And this Fusion Media, which cleaned it up with a given common background, so we didn't have like rusted metal. And when we found out, when Freeman Homes, that's me, I'm moving into the building, we just went ahead up and put up the sign, we found out that wasn't in within requirements for the city. But it fits that opening. And so therefore, we're going in front of you to ask for a comprehensive sign. We'd like to clean up all of the headers above all the buildings, and as you can look down at the other spaces, like Avis and Budgets in there, EMC, we're not filling the whole places, but we're, and then if you go down, Rubbermaid has like four stalls, we're just gonna have them put above their door, but we want to clean up the metal above, so it's all consistent. So we don't have all the inconsistencies that we have now. And that's the reason we're submitting for the comprehensive site plan, sign plan. Any questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, the number of tenants, the total square footage of the building is, what is it, 50 something thousand square feet? And there is... 1, 2, 3, 4... Well, there's probably, I might just go through it for you real quick. There's only 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 tenants. One of the tenants has 3 of the bays. You don't have, you have it in front of you? Right, if you look at the photographs below on page 5 of 11. If you look at that bottom section, that's Rubbermaid right now. And what we're proposing to do is, if you look right above it on figure 8, we would like to have put in the name of their company right above the door, and then on the right and left, just make it consistent, so it's not like rusted metal that's there now. Carry the color scheme in, so I'm not looking at rusted metal above. So whatever the color scheme of what the tenant wants, Rubbermaid, EMC, and all them were, they want white backgrounds. If you look at Force Performance on page 4 of 11, they have 2 bays, and you can see their sign that's up there. Figure 4 is Freeman Homes, and if you look at the bottom, figure 6, that was, that's above the same size as Freeman Homes, but it's smaller, but it fills that whole void that's above the window section of the building. I've just moved in there. No, 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 I'm Freeman Homes. But I own the building. And we didn't realize that the other signs that were put up years ago did not meet your requirements. So therefore, it was brought to our attention of what we needed to do and address to bring in, if we can make all the signs consistent, going across. They did the Fusion, we're trying to correct those there. Fusion Electric, if you look on page 6 of 11, they have a sign that's 96 by 48 inches, and they're, they can, they're only allowed to have 72 by 36. And if you look that whole side of the building on figure 10, that's the little Fusion sign. Right above, but that's within the requirements of the size of the sign that's allowed, above their, that door opening, that fits the requirements. So we're asking just for, these signs were already in place, so therefore, we're just trying to make everyone, you know, set... Either we can get approval to make this comprehensive sign for the whole building, or we have them, it was already up, have them take it down.
Questions? Yeah, can we get the staff report?
Stay up here.
Sit down.
For the comprehensive sign plan for 1234 Hanley Industrial Court. The subject property is located at the northeast corner of Hanley Industrial Court and Strassner Drive, and is zoned LI Light Industrial. The building was originally developed in 1986 and is a single-story multi-tenant building. Section 410, 120 of the sign code provides that buildings for single-story building with multiple tenants on a single zone lot, where each tenant having a grade level public entry is provided with one wall sign up to 1/4 the square feet of the tenant frontage, with a maximum of 20, with a minimum of 20 square feet and a maximum of 80. And there's also the allowance for a building sign identification, and then also, all signs cannot exceed 30%. The entire width of the building along Hanley Industrial Court is 390 square feet, lineal feet, and 20 feet in height. Therefore, 1/4 of the length of the building would be approximately 97 and 1/2 square feet in total sign area. And 30% of the total width of the facade of Hanley Industrial Court would be approximately 2,341 square feet. The applicants have requested the comprehensive sign plan that allows for the flexibility of signage, as long as it's in overall keeping with the, with the intent of the design, of the sign code. It is tailored to the specific development and may vary from the general ordinance provisions, provided that it's following the criteria of proposed signs are consistent with the purpose of the chapter. The proposed signs are compatible with the theme, visual quality, and overall character of the surrounding area. The proposed signs are in scale and harmonious with the development and shall be so located in size as to ensure convenience to the visitor, user, or occupant of the build, of the development, while not adding to street clutter or otherwise distracting from the nature of the development and adjacent uses and the purposes of the architectural and urban design elements. The proposed comprehensive sign plan is consistent with and furthers the goals of the comprehensive plan. The width of the building here. The request, allowing for each tenant to utilize the entire metal band along with, associated with each tenant space. There are 13 bands along the entire length of the building, and each, I wasn't provided specific size of each one, so I'm assuming based upon the one, they were all similar in size. So they were 28 feet in width and length, and 2 feet in length and width. And therefore, this would represent approximately allowing up to 728 square feet of signs along Hanley Industrial Court, along that building, but only represents 9.3% of the wall area for the building. The 3 of the tenants at the southern end of the building put up the signs without a permit that utilized the entire metal fascia that the applicant is now asking that extend it throughout the building. So therefore, you have the couple examples here, as he discussed. In addition, the end tenant at 1254 Hanley Industrial Court placed a 32-square-foot wall sign without a permit that faces Strassner, where the maximum sign area elevation would be 27 square feet, based upon the width of that elevation. And an 18-square-foot sign was also placed at the rear elevation of the building, that the applicant is also seeking to codify all of these signs with this comprehensive sign plan. They are also proposing some window signage, that is where the sign code limits window signage outside of the door. They are showing some limited signage with general, you know, hours of operation or phone numbers on the door, so. So the Planning and Zoning Commission is requested to review the comprehensive sign plan for recommendation to the Board of Aldermen. Again, the comprehensive sign plans are intended to provide for flexible criteria that superior and superior design that are tailored to a specific development, which may vary from general ordinance provisions. However, the applicant must demonstrate that the proposed terms would encourage and promote established principles within the comprehensive plan and provide a desirable and attractive living and work environment through harmonious and uniform signage. The property is located in the Hanley Industrial Court of the comprehensive plan, that it is to accommodate residence, residential through mixed-use development and pedestrian-friendly enhancements, and where placemaking and navigation and wayfinding signage should be simple, easy to understand and attractive, and contribute to the enhancing and the appearance of Hanley Industrial Court. The comprehensive plan does not get into specific sign criteria for individual tenants. So the Planning and Zoning Commission should review the proposal and make their recommendation. I've provided the proper motions for this application.
Yes, Sharon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question, like, kind of directed for the city more than anything. So we have, like, what, 3 or 4 signs that are up where they didn't get a permit? Why have we not noticed this? And have we looked throughout the city, or can we have someone in code enforcement look throughout the city to see if folks have actually put up signs when they didn't have a permit that don't meet the code? Because it seems grossly unfair to the people that we require to do it right, go through the sign permit process, you know, expend all that time and energy and comply with the rules. And I'm not saying a comprehensive sign plan doesn't, that's a separate issue, but just getting at the folks who are breaking the rules, like, like this gentleman bought a building and it was already like that, it's like not his fault, right? So can you speak to that?
So I can't really speak to the Force one. That was, that was placed up before I got here. I don't know how that got approved, I don't, they didn't, I don't have any record they've received a permit. But these are vinyl stickers, so sometimes it's hard for us to notice these things when you're driving around, or if our inspectors are going to another project for doing an inspection, you know, we don't always notice the signs, so it could have, it was just missed. When we looked at the Freeman, when the Freeman Homes went up, and that was, the inspector caught that one, and we noticed that, well, Fusion, the next door, put theirs up, and they didn't have a permit. Of course, it was after they did their inspection for that tenant's space, so... Sometimes these things are difficult to catch, but we have been going out and catching them when we can. One? So it's, we try to catch them when we can, I mean...
Obviously, you can't camp out at every building and watch, you know, so I just want to make sure that we actually have, code enforcement seems to be one of the biggest thing, that, things that has come up over many years before the commission. And it comes up on, online, and in discussions, you see it all the time, as issues with code enforcement. I know we've had some turnover in the code enforcement department. My last experience with the code enforcement officer was awesome. So I just want to make sure that, like, it's something that we actually do, like, we don't just go out when someone asks us to, that we actually are kind of driving, I mean, our community's small, right? Like, that we have somebody who goes out and looks at things, other than when somebody applies or complains to trigger them to do it. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes, and we do have people who drive around. I will say, since the majority of the community is residential, they're also, they're probably focused on the high grass and weeds, especially now that we're getting into the spring and summer seasons. But we can certainly, you know, catch those signs when we can. We've picked up signs that were left in the right of way. We try to catch them as much as we can, but, yeah.
Well, I wanted to address that, because like, when I read over the materials before the meeting, the first thing that jumped out at me is that we had several that had not gotten a permit. So that was the first thing I wanted to talk about, and differentiating, and I think the applicant did, that it was a condition before they bought the building, and in good faith, they assumed that that meant that this was the proper size, because the band was there. So I just wanted to kind of get that out of the way first, from my perspective. And then I wanted to ask about this Fusion, do they use, they've got a sign on the back of the building, do they, is there a door there that the public uses, or there is? Okay, and, and now you can go ahead and, and come back up to the microphone if you would.
Fusion does use the rear door. Actually, almost all the tenants there have garage doors and access doors to their suites. And parking, like Avis parks their extra cars back there. Overparking is generally directed to the back of the building, and that's how they enter the suites. But generally, all the suite doors are, are the metal doors, and they just have the address on them. And the people put those little signs above saying, basically, it's Fusion, Force Performance, and the other ones just have some lettering. I mean, it's a, it's a hodgepodge, I'll just be honest with you.
And in this case, though, the public uses the door?
Yeah.
So, under the intention that people be able to identify the entrance to a building, it would be serving a purpose other than just wall advertising, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. And then, how much space, if, if all of the tenants were to utilize the entire width of the band, how much space roughly would be between the signs?
Question.
Because that's one of the things that I would...
Because, because they're all, all the suites are roughly, she was, Winnie was correct, they're 20, 29 feet wide per section. But the building only has, as we said, 6 tenants for the 16 spot, 16 spots, and they don't have entrances to get in all the separate suites. But I, that doesn't say that down the road, if someone moves out, subs divides and does whatever. So if I had to guess in between, I don't, I would have to look at the building to measure, I don't know. Sharon, off again.
Okay, I'm just trying to, when I, when I look at it, to get a sense of, if, if we were to make this all, I like the idea in some ways of uniformity, if we were to make them all maxing out the, the width, like, if it would look crowded, especially if you ended up having...
Well, I think what you're gonna notice, when you look at them, Freeman Homes is the only, and you were totally 100% correct. Call the sign company, who did you use? You know, you just assumed that whole space was able to be used for a sign. We're the only one that really used the lettering all the way across. If you look at all the other ones, and if you look down at Avis and the other companies, they're just us. The background's there, but the lettering is small. But what they're saying in the comprehensive plan, since they covered that whole metal section, that's all a sign now, even the majority of its background, but it, it is their sign. So that's what they're really getting at, is Freeman's the only one that, if you look at the lettering, I covered the F-R-E-E-M-A-N across. The rest of them are small lettering, but they did the backing to clean up the sign.
Is there one of the, the photos in the presentation, Winnie, that would have Freeman Homes and the other ones, where you could see them all together? When I printed this out, I, my printer was doing weird things with color.
Go back to the...
So, I mean, yes. So the, the confer, oh, sorry. The comprehensive sign plan, because he, they're all using logos to identify the business for the entire area, we have to include that as part of the sign area?
Right.
So like Freeman Homes has the FH, and the Force Performance had Fs all across the frontage, as well as the Force Performance.
So this is, and, yeah, I'm totally with you, and I totally understand it about the, and the backgrounds, and the white backgrounds with Avis and all that kind of thing. When, when I'm looking at this, like, if you look at the 4 signs in the upper right-hand, and they, essentially, their logo is another sign, in a way, to the left of that right, so their whole front is basically like 2 signs. The distance between the 2, like, it doesn't look, it doesn't look bad to me, like, because it's logos?
It's probably 4 feet.
Okay, I'm just thinking about...
If I had to guess, I look, I bet you that's 4 or 5 feet, that's in between the 2 separate, well, the whole sign section. I bet you the in-between thing is not any more than 5 feet.
Okay, and because what I'm getting at is I'm, I'm, I'm trying to envision what it would look like if you have, I mean, with your other tenants, it wouldn't be so much, because there's like white space, for lack of a better word, or Force has the logo, so it looks, it doesn't look quite like a sign.
Like the Avis sign, if you look down to the Avis, that's, that's actually installed.
Right.
Well, the existing was approved without the white background. So what is out there now is...
Is the Avis budget, but we're gonna ask them what color that is. Rest is just rusted metal.
Okay, so, so what I'm trying to explain, which I haven't quite gotten this across yet, is that, I'm trying to figure out, let's say Freeman Homes is right next to Force, and they're both all the way across, right?
Which they are.
I'm trying to figure out what they would look like next to each other, and these photos don't have them next to each other, like, what would it look like if everybody had a wide band across? Would it look crowded?
It actually looks good.
That's what I'm trying to ascertain.
If you go out there and drive and look at it?
Right.
It doesn't hit you flat in the face, like, oh my god, like, okay, like, you can go across to the St. Joseph's of the death. They have the whole building, but they got that 6-foot-by-5-foot sign flat right over the door, you know what I'm saying? But they take the square footage, since they're the tenant of that whole space? That's how they get that big of a sign. Whereas, we're only doing the square footage of that front entry, which, why the square footage gets less, because we're only looking at a 20-foot-tall building by 28-foot-wide. That's why the numbers look, so if you drive through Hanley Industrial, there are, there are a lot bigger signs?
Right.
That are flat out in the buildings, but it's, they're bigger buildings, but if you look by over a single door entrance, or no different when you look at the credit union across the street, or urgent, urgent care above that door. It's big.
So, well, but the difference is, like, the idea of something looking cluttered because of too much signage, like, if it would look that way, if every tenant had, that's, okay.
I, it only came up when the inspector was inspecting the tenant's finish.
I mean, your sign looks great. I mean, I like the sign, I think it looks nice.
Thanks.
So what about the background? I want to make sure I understood this from, from what you all were saying.
On the background, so like, where Avis and Budget is, they put up, like, an Avis sign, it's a lit-up sign, and they got the Budget sign behind it. But then behind it, is all just like kind of rusted metal. And what we're trying to do is, as a building owner, I'm trying to tear out the land, you know, I want it to look nicer. And so, if I get this, then it's like going to the tenants, Avis and Budget probably would be like, be like Force, they want a back, black background, I'm just assuming whatever their company colors are. So then we can put behind that EMC, like, theirs is just basically that small little section above their thing. I, that way I can finish the whole thing with whatever background color with it, but it, that's called, considered a sign.
So they would, that, that's what I'm trying to understand about the background colors, so they could potentially all be different background colors, is that correct?
They could.
So would that make the frontage look more choppy? Because like, when you see those 3 tenant spaces, like, that picture's back up now, or at least one of them, like, when you see that with the white rusty background?
Yeah, we put the, we put the white back there, just...
Well, I mean, because that's all uniform, is what I'm saying, but like, if one tenant had pink, and one had green, and one had black, you know what I'm saying?
I agree with you, and I think that would, would get busy, but I think if we say, a part of this, you know, it's gotta be one solid background, and it can only be...
Yeah, there was an image that showed the entire thing at one point.
Wait, I want to finish hearing his sentence, could you repeat that again?
No, I think if we want to go ahead and say, okay, no, you give any sign that we put, they can approve the colors, I don't have a problem with that either, but we're gonna, I'd rather just put it all just pretty generic, not so it's not smacking you in the face. I just don't like the rusted metal.
So if we could come up with some sort of a condition, maybe, that would deal with, so they wouldn't all be on multiple backgrounds, if we're gonna take up that additional space, so there's some uniformity, so the building doesn't look too chopped up?
You could say that a certain percentage of units, if the one guy, you know, you can't have 3 units next to each other with all 3 different colors. You know what I'm saying? Where you get your choppiness?
Right.
But if you have a general flow of the same color background, they kind of flow together?
Right.
But I get what you're saying, we don't want a pink, we don't want a blue, you like the Budget blue or whatever, you just want a flatter background. But I don't have a problem with, if you all said, you, no unit can be, you know, not every unit can be different background?
Okay.
Or whatever you want to phase it.
So that would take an amendment to the proposed discussion. However, I think long-term enforcement of that could be different, if you leave it as vague as no to, like, because tenants change in and out all the time. I think it needs to be more specific. And if we want to look at creating a uniform... And if we want to look at creating a uniform design for the entire, or maybe a consistent one color for the background, and then tenant identification could be whatever tenant identification.
Mr. Freeman, may I inquire? You asked about, you spoke about Budget and Avis, and said you thought they would want a corporate color. Do we even know that any...
I'm just, I don't know.
Okay.
But as a building owner, what I'm trying to do to him is say, part of us doing this as a building, I don't want to see the rusted metal anymore.
I understand.
I want to put a backer.
But what you've shown here is a uniform white background for all the signs. Why not just go with that and tell them they want coloration, or logo colors or identifying colors, to put that in their sign? As opposed to this background strip, which you can make uniformly white?
Because then we have to go back to the other people that already have their signs and tell them they gotta tear their signs off that were there prior to me buying the building and me going to them saying, hey, I'm changing everything. So everything that you guys already put up needs to come down.
So we could do it instead, like, and it doesn't necessarily have to, it could be wider, it could be something else, but that it would be this, except for that the current tenants are grandfathered with what they have in, in our, in our condition, like that we would put in here.
A change of occupancy or a change of signage.
Right.
Which I'm totally fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I saw your hand up hard, I was trying to get you in there. Go ahead.
Oh, I think, I mean, I'm gonna let, I just, I really wanted to get to that and I really wanted to understand what was happening and see what might work. And it sounds like there's a potential working solution, depending on what the other commission members think about it, as far as, and we could figure out how to craft that. But I think that, like, I, everything that's been said, like, I feel like it's going in a good direction. And the idea of the comprehensive sign plan and making it something that's more comprehensive to the building, so it's not so piecemeal, fits more with the spirit of the comprehensive sign plan as well. And kind of the way that we've applied it over the years to, to other building owners, developers, and that sort of thing. So with that, I am going to not ask any other questions right now, because I want other people to be able to talk. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman Nelson, would you like to speak?
No, not tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So I appreciate, and I do think that Ms. Builderback's points about consistency, that was something that was also raised in the staff report, that we need to make sure that we're having, being consistent and fair to, you know, other residents and other businesses within Brentwood. You know, my, my take on this is, I really don't support that we are standardizing, basically, that the plan to go forward is to standardize on businesses that put signs up that are out of compliance. And I understand that their business is to run a business and not necessarily to understand every aspect of Brentwood's sign ordinances. But I don't believe that it is appropriate to say, well, then we just have to start with that as a standard. So if you have someone who's out of compliance and is painting a sign, put it across the entire width, and then to say, well, we're gonna allow them to stay up. I understand the, the building owner's concern. You don't want to upset a tenant, but I don't think that we just necessarily need to standardize on that. Having said that, and then we do get into the issues of if there is a standard background, because we've had some conversations in this commission about First Amendment issues and not being able to dictate font and color and things like that. I just want to make sure that we consider that. The other question that I don't think I heard, or two things answered, was with the side sign. So this was a business that had a sign also out of compliance, and that wasn't permitted on the side of the building, and they were using that as an entrance. I also believe that they have a door sign as well, which is also out of compliance. And so I'm trying to understand, I do understand wayfinding, to let folks know where to come into your building, and you want to put your, your company's logo there and let them know where to go. But if then you also have the information on your door, why is that needed? So I think that I'm still trying to understand those three pieces. We want to have consistency across the width and a change there. We want to have an exception for door signage, which I'm not sure I really understand the reasoning, if I've heard that so far. And then that last piece is the sign on the side of the building, which also is, again, something that was put up without permit. And so to make all of those legal, without understanding how that doesn't basically make us inconsistent with other businesses in the area, I, I think that I really want to understand a little further. To Ms. Builderback's point, and then I'm gonna be quiet. I do appreciate the consistency across. I do believe it's important to allow for some signage with the design of this building. I understand the, the, the building owner's point there, that we want to be able to provide a little bit more visibility. But I am concerned of the, well, if we just have, you know, this color and this color and this color, I think that we will be in, it will look very mixed. And I don't think that that will be consistent. And so saying that it is a background of X and you're allowed to have a sign of Y size on that background of X is something that I certainly think is important. Hopefully that makes sense, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman.
Sorry, a couple of questions. So the comprehensive sign plan relates to the site or to the city?
The comprehensive sign plan is for this specific site, and it includes all signs on the site.
And do we have a sense of how many properties have a comprehensive sign plan?
No. I know we've done a couple. I would say about a dozen off the top of my head, but I haven't dug into each property.
So there's, it's, it's a thing we do.
Yeah.
So I guess, just to try to summarize my thoughts on the conversation so far, I feel like there's two possible approaches, and I don't know if we've totally clarified what those are. So one would be a building-level solution, where you take that bar and you just kind of monochrome it all the way across, and that kind of ties the building, which I think it used to be like that at one point, as I drove by that building. So that's a building-level design, and then the sign goes on that wherever, as was, as was said. And then the other is sort of the, the way it's been going, right? Where the Freeman Homes goes all the way across, or the Performance goes all the way across, right? And I know we had an image at one point of the entire front edge of the building, and that did actually help the conversation. But, so I guess what I'm getting, yeah, there it was, thank you. But there was another one that had the actual signs, it doesn't matter. So I think the concern was, would it be busy or would it look piecemeal? And I'm not convinced that if you put one color all the way across and then put whatever random sign with its colors in the middle of that, I don't think that looks any less busy. In fact, that could look worse, but that's a decision we could vote on. But then I think the worst situation would be one where we grandfather some in and then make the rest do something else. That's gonna look busy, right? So you'll have some that are one color, three that are this color, and then a thing in the middle, and then a whole thing all the way across, and that's gonna look jumbled. So if we're actually looking for, I think the term was harmonious, you know, relative to this elevation, not necessarily to other things, it's a very specific elevation, then I think we should shoot for something which might actually be harmonious. So I would suggest that we choose between those two design strategies. If there's a color all the way across, sign in the middle, or that's fine, that's one way. Or if you go all the way across with each individual, you know, brand, that's another way. But the in-between way, I think, is a mistake, so.
Thank you. Yes.
I had a question for the owner. So you talk about this metal that's rusted. So are we looking at deeming the whole band a sign, and you're just gonna cover it with a vinyl or some, some sort?
That's why they're considered, we're outside the sign ordinance, is because the background is covering all the metal. So your square footage of the sign is that whole section.
I, I understand that. At that point, once you want to replace the rusted metal, I guess, what if a tenant comes in and only wants to put a four-foot sign on that twenty-nine feet?
Well, they would have a vinyl background, the whatever sign would go on top of it. We, we're just gonna make sure that there's no metal exposed anymore. And that's what we're putting together for all the tenants, saying, for the building, this is what we're doing. We don't want the rusted metal anymore.
So you're picking, you're picking a color then?
I'm, I'm gonna go to them. You're, you're the ones picking a color. I wasn't picking any.
What happens when that tenant leaves then?
Well, okay, that tenant leaves.
Can you get a different sign?
Normally, a, a different sign will go up with whatever the next tenant goes in, like any other business. You got hundreds, just drive through that whole area. You got hundreds of different signs. And there is no consistency. So I don't know how you're gonna, we're trying to just get our building, but yeah, you can drive around, there's plenty of signs that aren't meeting. I'm just trying to make sure we get everything to meet the requirement. It was brought to our attention that it wasn't. So I'm here to give a comprehensive plan, to say, in the future, this is all that can be done, and these are the codes that have to be followed for this building. I can't speak for past, I wasn't a part of it.
Senator Foreman?
Yes. I think harmonious is probably our biggest goal here. There are building elements that need maintenance and need to be replaced, that upper fascia, which currently is a dark bronze that matches the soffit and the storefront. So the base building, I'll call it, is all, you know, it's brick, it's dark bronze, it's smoky glass, it's all kind of harmonious.
Well, half the building's painted and the other half's not.
So there's, you're kind of making my point for me, but there's, there's thirteen bays in the building, right? Currently, it looks like from the pictures, you have twelve front doors, but it'd be reasonable to assume, reasonable, it could be different, that each one of those thirteen bays could be a different tenant at some point in the future.
Very easily could. I can't tell you when someone moves out, what's gonna happen. I don't have the crystal ball.
So the original building had a consistent fascia that has now reached the end of its useful life. And the approach taken on the south end of the building is that fascia band has become a sign. The entire fascia band is, has, by default, become a sign, legal or not. But if you go further north, there's multiple spaces, rubber, ink, and, I can't read the other one, where it's actually individual letters mounted on the fascia, but then we also...
Okay, rubber ink doesn't have anything? We, they wanted to, they, they... They wanted to see what would it look like if we did the comprehensive plan? And going back to rubber ink, okay, rubber ink, we're trying to clean up this whole front. What, you're gonna put a sign up, this is what we have to do.
So in those photographs...
Those, if you look at the first photo, there's nothing.
Okay.
Besides rusted metal.
I can, when I did my staff report, I drove by and took photographs, and rubber ink does have a, a sign up there.
Yeah, they're individual letters.
They're individual letters.
So we have individual letters on some tenants. We have small signs, Budget, and the one next door that are, that are box signs that are applied on the fascia, and we have others where the entire fascia has become the sign. So the problem then becomes, as the owner, you're proposing that that entire fascia is becoming the sign. And that's what you're asking for, to be able to allow tenants to control that full twenty-four, I can't remember the dimensions.
Right. Twenty-four by two feet.
Eight by two, yeah.
Twenty-eight foot by two foot, saying that whole thing is the sign, and the tenant is gonna control that for each of the thirteen bays individually. As opposed to someone coming in and putting up a box sign like Budget has done, I would...
But what I'm getting at is, not to interrupt, but I get where you're going, but here's, okay, Budget and Avis just went up.
Yeah.
Just went up. As a building owner, I can't, I guess I'm just gonna leave the rusted metal back there, because if we, if I put any backing behind it, that's considered a sign now. Correct.
What you've hit is the question. Is it a fascia, or are we saying that entire piece is a sign for each one of those bays? Even if there is no sign there, I would still expect the building owner to put something serviceable back there.
But if I put a, if I put a something back behind the sign, that's considered part of the sign.
Not necessarily.
You're saying the fascia, I'm saying, if you put a vinyl cover front...
Not necessarily, yeah.
If you just put dark bronze metal cladding back on those pieces, replacing in kind what's there, I think we would consider that a building element, not a sign element.
Okay.
So if that was a replacement in kind, I would say that actually would be the base conversation that we're then applying. Is it a full bay-wide, twenty-eight-foot-wide by twenty-four, twenty-eight-inch-high fascia sign? Or even if a tenant only wanted the four-foot sign, that should still be applied over a consistent harmonious background.
So technically, the reason why this whole thing is considered the sign is also with the, because the logos are incorporated into that as well. If there was to be a consistent, single color on all of the buildings, then the background would not be the sign. But once you add the logos all the way across, you have to account for that as part of the sign area.
So the, and we've had this discussion on other projects, I'm thinking of our past restaurant project, where the color was considered as part of the sign.
Now, the code does say that, you know, if there's a distinction between the color of a background and the building, then yes, that the background is considered part of the signage.
So if ever your tenant had a, you know, prominent color, that they changed the whole background to, it's a sign, that's what you're saying? So, so if there's one color all the way across, that's one thing, and if there's multiple colors, it's another. So that's kind of what we're deciding, is that...
We're actually, I think we're still framing the question. I don't think we've actually reached a proposed solution yet, because we're still framing the question. And the question is, are we, are we going to say, for this building and this comprehensive sign plan, that entire fascia is under the control of the tenant as a sign? And if that's allowable, great, then we, that's the way we structure it and we make it, that's the comprehensive sign plan for this property. I, I'm not in favor of the inconsistency of pin letters, box letters, and full fascias.
We have a picture in here of a compliant sign under the existing...
Yeah.
Do you mean on this building or just in general?
On this building.
On this building.
Those, yeah. Those actually were compliant. And the Avis did get approval, and they only, it only measured around the box of the sign.
I'm sorry while you're looking. So Avis got approval because of the size of the rectangle of their sign, but the background color matches the background color of the sign.
The background was still the raw metal, was still the bronze metal.
Okay, and then the white came later? Isn't it white now behind it?
No, that's what he's proposing, that it would go to white.
While she's looking for signage on the spaces where tenants don't have signage, and you've got your maintenance plan, what are you planning to do on that metal? Are you replacing it, or are you...
We're gonna cover with whatever the metal matching the color viewed of background. Say they want, they're white, and they, that, the company, Rubbermaid. We're, those other bays that you're not doing anything with, we're gonna cover them so it's consistent to your whole suite. You know, Rubbermaid, this is Rubbermaid's section of the building.
But that'll be like a painted metal, anodized aluminum, something.
Most likely it's a painted metal that they, that they'll pin to the rusted metal like they did on all the other signs.
That's fine. I just, at one point, I thought I heard you say you were gonna cover it with vinyl, which I was concerned with.
Then it's a covered metal that, like, Force Performance was a covered black metal that went over the metal, and they have a raised E for, or F for Force, but it has a vinyl coating to it.
Okay.
Avis is just their sign.
Yeah, the, here's the street view. The ECMG group and the Rubbermaid were compliant. Whatever was here before appears to have been compliant. And, and these two that, that are not in compliant. And now that Mr. Freeman Homes went into this space and he put up the Freeman Homes sign, that is not compliant.
So just a question, what does the, the request before us actually ask for?
It is to utilize the entire... It is to utilize the entire bandwidth for tenant signage, so that was.
So it would make the Freeman Home sign.
It would make the Fusion, the Freeman Home sign, the Force Performance, both of those compliant. And then as any other tenants move into these space, they would be entitled to utilize the entire width of the sign band.
That's what's before us, is that?
Right, and it codes the Fusion sign on the south side of the building.
Right, so if we were to vote, which we are not ready to do yet, but we would be voting on what's been presented unless someone changes that, right? So, you know, so at the moment, the only thing that I've heard is potentially we change the larger, I'm sorry, the side sign to be the right size, right? And then we can decide if we, because that's what you're asking us to decide on, if the entire fascia can be a sign, right? Okay. Make sure.
Yes, Sherry?
Going back to what we had talked about earlier, I, you know, I see a reason to have, or have the sign for Fusion for public entry on, on the back. And I could, I mean, the pictures that Whitney showed on the doors, that looked reasonable to me as far as, because it had a logo and it had hours and stuff like that, unless I'm not understanding that correctly. But as far as, like, the front edge, I like the idea of having a consistency of background. And I don't think, you know, in looking at this and spending the last, you know, 40 minutes that we've been talking about it, I, I think it'll probably look good with the signs going all the way across. I think that the Freeman Home sign like that looks really good. But then we run into the problem with the existing ones that are in current violation of the code through no fault of the, the building owner. And I don't know what the consistent color background is, you know, but the reference to, you know, the prior material that was there, if it's consistent with the architecture of the building, you know, I wouldn't have a problem with that being the background. So just kind of circling back to that discussion maybe a little bit.
I'd like to add to that. I, I like the idea that what if every tenant had their own color? So he's talking about Fusion, they have, say, four bays, and it's all black. And then you know the next-door neighbor is a different tenant, so that's a different color. I don't think that would be a problem if they have a different color in that sense. So the Freeman Homes is the full size, it's green. If you have the Budget and Avis, you know, they have a, whatever color that they would have behind there. Maybe if their signage is small like that, maybe for those, you have a consistent color. You know, they don't have, you don't have to have 10 colors, but just so that you're differentiating what the tenants are, and the tenants that maybe have a smaller sign that's not the full thing, you can just have building standard color for those tenants.
Anyone else? We're gonna. Sure, uh, does the applicant have any further thoughts about, you know, consistency? I thought we, it sounded like you were waiting for us to make a decision, let you know. Yeah, so.
I think Matt brought up a very valid point. Sherry's had some great ones. And Matt, I think, and then also Carl was saying the same thing. I guess we're looking as a building owner, it's that metal section, do we want to consider? I mean, whether they put the lettering like I did for Freeman Homes, or they do like the smaller stuff that the other people did. But I do think that, I'm agreeing with Matt, that suddenly becomes the sign. Because whoever goes to remodel to put it up, they're gonna put some backer on it to clean it all up. And as the building owner, I was going to go to the other people, Rubbermaid and all that, saying, hey, by the way, we got a comprehensive plan. We need to resubmit, we're gonna resub, maybe Rubbermaid wants to go with all, big letters, I don't know. But that way I can at least say, I am gonna clean up all of the bays, whether you, whatever your back is for that one, because it defeats the purpose for me to go hodgepodge and try to fix a few of them, because that looks worse. If I would replace a couple pieces of metal, it's just personally, and I know this is all personal preference, I don't want to drive up and see it every day. I'm gonna be there every day, so that's why I'm trying to clean it up and tear all the landscaping up, because I'm there. And that's, it's a personal thing to me. That's the reason why I brought this up, to go ahead and say, hey, I, it was, and it was Whitney and all the, hey, the sign isn't compliant. You know, really, I'll be honest with you. I just called who did Fusions, said, hey, you know, can you put up a sign for me? We find out that they just went ahead and stuck them up without a permit, and that's why we're here having this discussion.
Okay.
I don't want it to happen in the future.
Well, I don't know if we're gonna get a solution tonight, so, um. Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
But most of them are single occupancy, a great many of them, or they have pedestal signs. So I don't think that that is a fair comparison, but I do understand the specific needs of this building, which has more sing, or more multiple tenant occupancy, and so to distinguish themselves. So I take that point. I also want to just caution against legitimizing folks who have basically put up signs that are not compliant. And I'm concerned that that sends a wrong message, that anyone else can just put up a sign, whether it's on the side of the building, a door, or the top of the building, and then just say, well, we'll do it, and we'll go seek a comprehensive sign plan, because now there's a precedent that they just have to normalize that. And I'm concerned about that, and I want to express it. My suggestion is I do think that perhaps subcommittee might be appropriate for this. And so I would, actually, if the chair would entertain a motion, I would move to, to review this in subcommittee.
Yes, that was, that was the point I was gonna bring up, but I think we need to, I would agree, move the subcommittee. So you made a motion for subcommittee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, oh, oh.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion for?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I know there's no one sitting in the audience, but we need to ask if there's any audience comments, please.
Sure, thank you, Sherry. Yes, does anybody in the audience or online want to comment on that? I don't see anyone, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sherry. Okay, so I guess we do an individual vote for subcommittee. Hart Nelson?
Yes.
John Ritter?
Yes.
Matt Foreman?
Yes.
Sherry Bilderbach?
Yes.
Jeff Moore?
Yes.
Carl Carlin?
Yes.
Jack Shelton?
Yes.
Jeff Hunt? And Brian Nolan. And the motion passes, and when is subcommittee?
May 29th.
May 29th?
30, all right, 6, sorry.
6 p.m., May 29th.
And I won't be able to be here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, um, I guess we have some new business to need to take care of then. Thank you, the applicant for coming in, thank you. Um, so we have some new business about our annual, or I don't know if it's the annual, but nomination of officers. How do we open up that? Does anybody need to? Yeah, does anybody have nominations for? Or, okay, nominations for chairman? Does anybody like to make them nominate anyone for chairman? Sherry?
I nominate Hart Nelson.
And we need a. Okay.
A second.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think we need, I don't think we need seconds for nominations. I think anyone can make nominations. And then we'll, we'll have an opportunity to do nominations again next month before we vote.
Yeah, we don't vote tonight, but yeah, there'll be another. Yeah, okay, how about any nominations for vice chair? I don't know if phenomenal's the word, but he's doing a job. Um, I accept. Then we have, what, secretary? Or any other nominations for vice chair? No, nomination, is it secretary?
Secretary.
I would nominate, okay, go ahead, Sherry.
Paul Moran.
Paul Moran for secretary.
He is not there, but I happen to nominate Mr. Moran, and he will accept.
Okay. Other, we don't have any other positions, do we? Nope, that's it. Okay, and that just moves to our next meeting, correct?
Um, yes, so we have the site plan subcommittee on May 29th.
Okay.
And that will be in our conference room. So if you can email us if you're available for that date, we will get that scheduled. Then our next meeting is June 10th, 12th, sorry. And we do have a couple of applications that will be on that agenda as well. It should be a more robust meeting. But the, all of the deadlines for it is not till Monday, so we haven't gotten all those applications in, so.
Okay. Aldermanic report, and I'm seeing the alderman. Director of Planning and Development report. Oh, yes. Yeah, I think I just gave us the director report, okay. And then we have a new member tonight we'd like to introduce. That would be Jack Shelton. Hello, Jack.
Hi, how are you doing?
And, uh. Yeah, go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, so, hello, I know some of you. I'm Jack. I was an alderman for two and a half years. I was an alderman in Ward Four for Brentwood Forest, and my wife and I had a child, and we're lucky enough to find a home in Brentwood, in Ward One now. So we are still luckily Brentwood residents, and the mayor is trying to get me to get back involved. And now that our daughter is older, I'm looking for some more things to do. So glad to be joining everyone and looking forward to it.
Great, nice to have you, welcome. And I think that's it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, a second? All in favor? Meeting adjourned.